Welcome to the March 7, 2018 regular Board Meeting. Welcome to our student representative from Nova High School, Ellie Kapstani.
Kapstani.
Kapstani, thank you so much. Ms. Kapstani will have an opportunity to provide comments regarding our school later in the meeting. Ms. Ramirez, the roll call please.
Director Burke.
Here.
Director Geary.
Present.
Here. Director Mack.
Here.
Director Petu.
Here.
Director Pinkham.
Present.
Director Harris.
Here.
Director DeWolff.
Director DeWolff.
Present, sorry.
Chair's prerogative. Before the Pledge of Allegiance, I would like to ask for a moment of silence for the victims of the February 14 Parkland tragedy while the pictures of the victims are on the screen. Now, if folks could stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
... by the United States of America and to the United States of America. We do not have any recognitions or student performances this evening, so I'll turn the
floor over to Superintendent Larry Nyland.
Thank you. I'd like to begin by recognizing Ellen Rowe, a long, long, long time Board Member, 24 years, so let that be an aspiration for all of you here at the front table. She served long and well. I was Superintendent in Pasco during that time and President of Washington Association of School Administrators, so I had an opportunity to work with Ellen along the way. David Moberly, Superintendent at the time, says that it was a great honor to work with Ellen for five years, and she always did her homework and put what was best for students March 12 through 16 is Educational Support Professionals Week, and we will be sending a proclamation out via email to all of our staff, including our education support professionals. Every day, these professionals support the district's commitment to ensuring educational excellence for every student. They support every manner of operations possible, from our offices to safety, maintenance, safe transportation for students, healthy nutrition, and instruction of our students. So we invite all of our staff to share in expressing our gratitude to our educational support professional colleagues during this coming week and throughout the year. The agenda notes that we would have a presentation by the African-American Male Advisory Committee, and I did have a chance to meet with them recently, and they are eager to come share their work with the Board, but they did ask if they could do that at the next meeting to give them a little bit more time to put their work together. As I do each time, I want to give just a brief update on each one of our strategic planning goals. Goal number one is educational excellence and equity, and today, and this last week or so, has been a great week. Mayor Jenny Durkan came in promising to put in place the 14th year Seattle Promise. She was at Garfield last week, and we had a panel presentation that I was pleased to be a part of, along with Seattle Colleges. Seattle Colleges has done awesome work, South Seattle College has done awesome work for the last 10 years. They've worked the bugs out of this program. They provide wraparound services for students. They start during the senior year for students, and they engage with them every month, and then engage with them over the summer, and then have them together as a cohort, and they take some of their classes together, and so they just get amazing support. We now have about 600 students that have been through this program, and we're starting to hear success stories. We heard another one today at Ingram where the document MOU between the City of Seattle and Seattle Colleges and Seattle Public Schools was signed. So hearing students who've come through our schools and have done their one or two years at Seattle Community College and are moving on to college and a career, four-year college and career, is truly exciting. Orca K-8, we heard from them a while back about how they engage students, and they participated on the 16th for National African-American Parent Involvement Day, and this is an example of arrows coming together. So not only did they reach out to families for family engagement, but they also had Dr. Emily Petrie from the Office of Minority Affairs and Diversity at the University of Washington and others from our district coming to share with students on that day about how important family engagement is, how important school is, and how important it is for students to stay in school and do well. And our very own Keisha Scarlett was recognized at Franklin High School this last week for the Franklin Award at their Power, Justice, and Freedom Summit. I was not there this year. I was there last year, and it is an amazing, awe-inspiring presentation with students, bands, speeches, recognitions. So congratulations both to Franklin for putting on a great event and modeling that event throughout the entire school year. This year, they recognized Keisha Scarlett, Nikita Oliver, Aaron Jones, Dr. Caprice Hollins, and Tracy Hooper Wells. So congratulations to each of them. Improving systems is another, is goal two, number, second part of our strategic plan. We do know that the state was going to announce on Monday morning, and then Tuesday morning, and then Thursday, when, they're not there yet, to us anyway, who the priority schools are. So as you know, No Child Left Behind has been replaced by ESSA. Sorry, President Harris, I can't do that one off the top of my head. And, so, our research department has been working with our Title I office, trying to figure out who those schools might be. It depends on the cut score that they set at the state level, and so we will be sharing that information with the School Board privately in the next day or two, we think, and then we think that it's supposed to go public next, next week. The program is supposed to be different. It's kind of the old version I called punishing people into greatness, and the new version is designed to be more user-friendly and recognizing that schools, in many cases, are doing the best that they can, and they need support. So actually, our Title I budget will continue to go down, partly because our free and reduced student enrollment is going down, and partly because the, how do I say this, the feds are allowing the states to take more Title I dollars off the top to provide support for these priority schools. In most cases, we're already working with them. You've seen the red, yellow, green charts from Wyeth and the MTSS work. So he's working with 24 schools that we recognize have needs for additional support, and we'll find out in a few days or a few hours how close we are to agreeing with the state on the same group of schools that need greater support. The legislature is scheduled to adjourn tomorrow. This is a short session. I can't remember the last time that they ended on time, but I'm told that they will end on time. So we'll see. I co-signed an op-ed that was in the paper yesterday or today with a nice headline on it, "Legislature Should Listen to Superintendents." Usually, the paper doesn't say that. And so, that was, that was nice. And we continue to say we're appreciative for the work that the state has done, but they're not done yet, and it continues to leave Seattle just a little bit short of being made whole in the long term. So we think that there's still more work to be done there. And I guess while I'm on that topic, I'll give a shout-out to Melissa for her column at the Puget Sound Business Journal. That was a nice, nice piece and well-done, calling out the same thing that we haven't fulfilled in McLeary, and we, even with all of the money that we're putting into education, we're still about average, and we're getting better-than-average results. So, thank you, Melissa. Family education levy funding, I think we have, are on two balls in this case. One is what's happening right now. We just got a notification from Deal at the City of Seattle that they will provide, be providing grants of $321,000 each for 21 of our elementary schools. That truly does help, and I think it is part of the reason why we have so many outliers that are outperforming the state. The other eye that we keep our eye on is how much they're going to ask for in the upcoming family and education levy. We are told that it might be a little bit less than what we had anticipated. That's the good news. The other part of it is what's in it, and how much of what we're currently do will be supported, and how much might be either reduced, just to keep the sticker shock down, and/or to fund other, other programs. So we'll keep an eye on that. Sacagawea Elementary, I had the opportunity to be there on Monday morning, and wow, another great example of arrows coming together. They decided they wanted more support for technology. They reached out to one of the parents. Parents found a grant opportunity, Power Up, found out that they needed lots of student voices, they needed lots of staff voices. All of the students and the staff stepped up. They got a substantial grant from Power Up, which is several technology firms working together, and they wanted to do better, so they coordinated with our technology department. They coordinated with teachers in the building who agreed to support the rollout of the technology. They worked on their instructional plan for how they were going to use the technology, and they got money from a family foundation parent that no longer has children there. And so, wow, just amazing how all of those different parties came together and are doing just great things for kids. Goal three is our family and community engagement. Thank you to our School Board for the, our call to action, special meeting last week. Thank you to Eden Mack for taking the lead on getting a resolution drafted in regard to gun safety and making our schools safer. Thank you to Director Leslie Harris and Eden Mack, as well as our student, student and, but Amelia Allard from Ballard, giving her remarks with regard to gun safety and why, why it's so important. I followed that with a letter to staff, community, and have a letter to students that will be available for the 14th as our effort to keep our eye focused on the 24th of March and give schools other alternatives for what they might do in school on the 14th, and hopefully have fewer students out of school on the 14th where we can't keep them safe quite as well. That said, I understand that Governor Inslee will be at Ballard, walking with students on the 14th. Family engagement study has just been completed, and I think, I think it's posted. We'll find that out. I don't see it quickly here in my notes here. We did, that is one of our focal points for our work together, and we wanted to know what we are doing, how well it's coordinated, and another opportunity to line up our arrows, make our arrows touch. We do have several efforts underway, and, including the Seattle Council PTSA focus on family engagement, our family engagement in the high school, and our co-design work with principals. So we're excited to see that work come together. It is open enrollment time, and we have gone to online admissions, and we have had 4,263 online applications. And we also note that it's quieter out here in the lobby, and that means that for our families that aren't able to get online, and the families who do come here to get registered and enrolled, we're better able to give them personal attention and help them figure out locations that will work best for their, for their students. And last week, we had two, well, I guess one work session, two parts, with the School Board, looking at 24 credits and all of the things that still need to be done as we move forward in that direction. Thank you for the Board input in that area. I think we heard that 36 out of the 40 largest school districts in Washington are, same place where we are, somewhat behind in moving toward implementation on this important change. But it is a heavy lift, and as Board members have noted, we want to do it well. We want to have a good professional development. We want to have it be well-thought-out, so thank you to the Board for spending time. Thank you to staff for continuing to work on that. And thank you to George Breland, Principal, and Catherine Brown, Assistant Principal at Cleveland, who were there to talk to us about what an eight-period day looks like and how they have worked out some of those bugs. And thank you to Jolynn Bergy around the budget discussion and our ability to move forward. Again, our budget for this coming year looks much brighter than we once feared. Looks like it will be much easier to balance than it has been in previous years. However, that's a short-term something, snapshot, because when our levy fully goes away, the new state-reduced levy will be back into crunch time for our budget in that the state's not fully funding special education and compensation. We also sent out communication with regard to emergency preparedness, and as I said at the press conference recently, and to the principals yesterday, I think we really have two parts to our work, and as I've been listening to the news coverage of the tragedy in Florida, there's really two parts to it. One part is all of the stuff that we can buy, in terms of security systems, and security guards, and locks, and all of the other things that go with it. And the other part is what we can do with regard to social-emotional health, making students feel welcome, giving them a sense of belonging in school, and thanks to the work that we've been doing around our professional development and our partnership with SEA and PASS, all of our indicators are trending in the right direction. School suspensions are down, referrals are down, and the number of students that get reported for a threat assessment are down. If we do hear of a threat, sometimes in the middle of the night, from one of our Board Directors last year, we're in immediate contact with the Police Department and trying to analyze that. When we get them during the school day, we immediately pull together a 411 Threat Assessment Team, and we have a protocol that we go through to try to determine, is this a prank? Or is this something where a student truly is in crisis and a danger to themselves or to others? So, a lot of good work underway, and obviously, still more, more work to be done, and thank you again to the Board for their leadership in terms of the gun safety portion of that. That is probably the closest thing that we can have to something that would really make a big difference. A variety of good news. Ballard Chamber Orchestra was second in the nation. Garfield High School Basketball Team won state championship. We think that they'll be invited to the national championship. We heard recently from the Bridges Program for Student Success. Got a personal note from an employer who had picked up one of those students and had them employed. They were doing well, qualified for a good wage and benefits, so the program is working. Franklin High School won the District Mock Trial Championship, and today was SAT School Day at SPS. So the district supports all students taking the SAT and the PSAT because when they take it, they find out that they may actually be college material. Hope all of our students are. And then they start getting all of this propaganda in the mail, saying you should go to college. And that, together with our now Seattle Promise that says you can go to college and there's not a financial barrier, all of that helps move us forward. We did hear, actually, in this conversation around the 14th year, that the 13th and 14th year, 40% of those students are students who said that they never thought that they would be able to go to college. So it truly is moving the needle for the students that have the greatest need. Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent Nyland. We are at item number four, Board Committee Reports. We have not had committees meet since our last Board Meeting, but we know that our legislative representatives have been busy. Director Mack, did you want to give a short update? And then Director Geary as well, please.
If I also might, I wanted to give a kind of preview to the operations meeting, which is happening tomorrow, so folks might know what, if I could talk about that first.
Yes, ma'am.
So, we don't have a ton of things on the agenda tonight for Ops, which is unusual, and we're making up for it tomorrow. We have 14 different bars that are going to be on our agenda. Lots of projects moving forward, building, we're growing, we need more buildings. It's great work and really exciting. We're also going to be talking about some things that folks are interested in to understand what's happening for next year and capacity management strategies that we might have to take, maybe adding some portables or different things that are going to be happening at different schools. So we're going to get an update from staff on the plans that are in the works. We're also going to be talking about the 2019-20 school year, so we can kind of get ahead of the planning around potential boundary changes or things that need to be happening. We know that we have the Magnolia Elementary School planned to be opening in 2019. That's going to require some boundary shifting, and, and conversations on that are going to start, so we'll learn more about that timeline and process and what's going on. And we're also going to be talking about our overall work plan, because there's a lot on it. We have Bex 5, our levy planning coming up. Part of that process is developing a facilities master plan for the district, so we're going to be talking about that. And additionally, we recently had a work session on the partnership agreement with the city, which kind of folds into the facility master planning and all of our building work. And we're coming back on March 28 for a full-board work session to talk about Bex planning, the facilities master plan, and how the city and the district are partnering together to support this work of planning for future buildings. So that's going to be really exciting. We're going to be talking about that at our meeting tomorrow. From a legislative standpoint, so many bills and so much going on, really complicated to try to track all of them, but some key things to note, apparently, the budget doesn't include a lot of the fixes that we're asking for in terms of the McLeary fixes. The experience factor, which Dr. Nyland referenced in his op-ed, is not included. A number of things that we, as well as other districts, have asked for may not be moving forward in terms of fully funding these issues. And if they leave, if they finish up tomorrow, then we'll know what the final result is, and then we can do our analysis and move forward from there. One bit of good news, though, is that Senate Bill 6095, which is the capital budget, has passed the House, and it needs to go back to the Senate, and it's, I would think likely that it would pass. And there's some funding requests in there to help our capacity needs, so cross your fingers, and if, that's just exciting news. One disappointing bill, well, one great bill that's disappointing that it's not moving forward, at least at this point, is a bill that would adjust the funding formulas around the school construction assistance program. This bill would help districts all across the state to fully fund the buildings that they need. Unfortunately, that doesn't look like it's moving forward. But another good news is that they did pass, and the governor signed today, I think, a bill banning bump stocks, which are the ability for firearms to be turned into mass-killing machines. Those have been banned in Washington, so that's exciting news, and I'm, I'm really proud that we're taking a lead on gun safety measures, both in our district, as well as supporting legislative action at the state and congressional level. I think those are the main things that I wanted to talk about. Director Geary, did you have any additional bills you wanted to mention?
I didn't want to add anything more, and thank you for the report on the state legislative. As the federal ledge rep, if it's all right, will be attending the Council of Great City Schools Legislative Conference next week. I'll be attending with Deputy Superintendent Stephen Nielsen. And we have planned, we, currently, we have plans to meet with Senator Murray and Cantwell's staff, but we also want to prepare packets. Last year, my experience was that because the Department of Education, under Secretary DeVos, it was unclear as to what was going to happen, and I don't know if we're seeing anything more concrete at this point. Rather, I, I think that'll be a great opportunity for us as the state's largest district to go and share the work that we're doing outside of, you know, what's happening on the federal level. So we're going to put packets together to educate at the federal level, some of the great work that we're doing here around EOG, race inequity, ethnic studies, the gun control resolution, our college and career readiness moves, and then also explaining some of the issues that we're facing with regard to the funding gaps as the intersectionality between the state's budget and what we're seeing with regard to the money that we get at the federal level as well, since that, those are identified areas of need around ELL and special education. So I'm going to make the most of it. It's always exciting to go to the Council of Great City Schools, which is a conference of the leaders from the United States' largest urban districts, and a lot of work that's very pertinent to the work that we do in Seattle. So it's good to hear how that is happening, and it's good to share, and it is always, it's good because we go, and it's very clear that Seattle Public Schools is seen as a leader around some of the work, predominantly around closing the achievement gap and the opportunity gap. And so, it's exciting place to go and get our, our enthusiasm restoked up, however you would say it. But if people have ideas that they want me to take to Washington DC, please feel free to contact me on Facebook or email.
Okay. Do any of the other committee chairs have a heads-up for incoming new meetings and legislation that would be of public interest? Quickly. Director Burke, Chair of CNI.
I just want to provide a couple of brief heads-up points related to the Curriculum Instruction Policy Meeting coming up on Tuesday, March 13. Looking at the agenda, I'm going to identify five topics to share that I think are of, of broad interest. One of them, we have a bar that's coming before us for our interim assessments. This is something that's been discussed for a while now and is coming forward under our assessment policy and for Board approval. This will be, you know, integrating with the student reporting system and homeroom, and will help our teachers do, you know, better understand their, how their students are progressing against the standards. We have a instructional materials update that's going to be essentially mapping out what materials adoptions are recommended for, for funding and to create committees for 2018. So folks that are interested in instructional materials, that's a lively topic. The ethnic studies team will be providing a report as well. The ethnic studies team will be providing a report as well on that work and how the ethnic studies curricular work and some of the piloting that they're trying to do is progressing. We're going to be getting a report and presentation on starting up dual-language immersion pathway in the southeast. This was, you'll recall, this was part of our recent board resolution, student assignment plan work around the language immersion pathway at Lincoln High School and creating a partner pathway in the southeast. And then the last point is another lively topic, advanced learning. We had a board resolution that many folks will recall vividly, and that's coming before the Curriculum Instruction Committee to understand, okay, how are we going to actualize that? Creating a task force, what does that charter look like, and the timeline and work plan for that. So I think it's going to be a full agenda, but all really good topics. So I hope other directors can attend if they'd like, and by all means, the public is welcome to attend as well.
Thank you, Director Burke. Director Pinkham, A&amp;F?
Thank you, Director Harris. Actually, just, we did have our quarterly update yesterday meeting, so the agenda's online, so I'm not going to go through too many things there, but we had some follow-up on internal house with Raynard Beach High School, which should be coming up with our next board meeting. We had reports from the Audit Response, Instructional Leadership, Human Resources, Budget and Finance, on how things are going with them. Capital Projects requested an extension, so we didn't get a chance to hear from them, but we will be following up with them. And Operations did not have anything on our audit quarterly report. Our next quarterly audit will be June 5th. Remember that date, because it's very special to me.
Yes.
It's my birthday. Hint, 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 hint. And the next Audit and Finance meeting will be this coming Monday. We appreciate Mr. Stone with his work. He actually requested inventory of grants that we have, so we can see what we do have in there. We'll be presenting that to us at the next meeting. Just a couple of contracts we have to go over and just the regular agenda. No really big items right now for me coming up, but with Directors Wolf and Mack, I think we're coming up some good questions for our Audit and Finance team, but hopefully we'll see more transparency and accountability, I think, with what we're, the direction we're going.
Okay. Last, I hope not least, Executive Committee. We are continuing to work on our back-mapping project with the superintendent and with the deputy superintendent and those that we call in, so that we can, A, get our arrows lined up and moving, and we can put some deadlines on the big lifts and back-map it, figure out what we need, and do a better job of community input and getting everyone's voice to the table. Next up, Ellie, we have student comments. We welcome you. This is your chance to tell us who you are and about your extraordinary high school, Nova. You need to bring the mic close to your mouth, because it doesn't pick up otherwise.
Yeah, all right. So, my name is Ellie Capastani. I'm a junior at Nova High School. It's my second year. I went to private school, actually, across the water for my freshman year, that in the end didn't work out, but I'm really grateful for Nova, because it gave me a place where I could express my voice more, and I could be me in a way that I guess I didn't really have there, and I haven't had in the past. And I strongly believe that the most important part of any community is to accommodate the needs of the people within it and to listen to the people who are there. And where I've been before, sometimes private school, sometimes even in public school, even here in Seattle, I've had, I feel like my voice sometimes isn't always heard. But I'm grateful for this opportunity, and I'm grateful for Nova, because it's given me an opportunity to really speak and to express what my needs are, and it feels like a place that's for me. And that's one thing that's great about Nova, is that we've always had the ability to speak and contribute. Just earlier today, we were working on designing an event for the school, Consent Day, talking about consent and the importance of it and all sorts of related things. They're a bunch of student-led and adult-led workshops. But what's important to me, and what makes me feel proud about this, is that it's completely planned by students. There are, there's adult input, our assistant principal is helping, but in the end, it's about the students, and I think that that's the most important thing. And so I'm grateful for the opportunity to be here and to represent Nova, to this community, and I'm grateful that you're listening to student input. And, and sort of similar to this, we are at Nova working on redesigning our committee system to try to get more student input, because we really, really value the importance of hearing people and hearing what their needs are, because we can sit up here and talk about what it is we think everyone needs, but we don't know. I don't know what Nova needs. I'm not Nova, I'm just one person. And I can represent them, but I have to listen to them, and I have to talk to them, or else I'm just going to be a person up here giving a speech. And that's good, but it doesn't really mean anything. And so more than anything, we are continuing to work on involving students in our school and trying to get as much feedback as we can in how the school is run. And I'm pretty happy about how that's been done, but there's still work to be done, this work to be done here, and there's work to be done on a national level, and there's work to be done within Nova, within our school. And we're continuing to work on that. We're reconstructing our committee system, trying to work on giving more things, like in light of recent events, we're christening a safety committee, where we're going to talk about how to, some of what you were talking about earlier, is talking about how we can help deal with making students feel comfortable and emotionally healthy and feel welcome despite all the scary things that's going on right now and the recent tragedies. And it's all hard, but as a community, as a city, as a school district, within our school, we're trying to continue to accept people and to move on. And so I'm thankful that we're here, I'm thankful to be here today, and I'm thankful for Nova. Thank you.
And we're most thankful for you, and I hope that we will see a great many of your colleagues and students and teachers on March 24th, 10:00 AM, Cal Anderson Park, so we can all stand up together. Thank you very much. Okay, we have now reached the consent portion of tonight's agenda. May I have a motion for the consent agenda, please?
I move approval of the consent agenda.
I second the motion.
Approval of the consent agenda has been moved and seconded. Do directors have any items they would like to remove from the consent agenda? Going once, twice, three times? Those in favor of approving the consent agenda, please say so by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, we have reached board comments. We will have the opportunity to add to our comments after public testimony, to address the public testimony issues. Who would like to go first? Director Mack?
Let's see, so I already talked about committee stuff, so I don't need to mention that. I had my community meeting a few weeks ago, and it was relatively well-attended, about 10 folks came. The questions that came up there were a lot around what's the planning around our new buildings that are coming along, our boundaries, and those sorts of things. So we had a really great, robust conversation around the partnership agreement with the city, how that work is moving forward, let people know that we had a work session on it, that there's planning going on, and how to engage in that process, including that the operations committee's talking about those things. And there's some engaged folks that just want to kind of know what's going on and be engaged in the process and decision-making. And there was also a concern that was raised around some change in practices on, to online enrollment for our birth-to-three service providers, and I'm really happy to share that by raising this concern and by connecting with staff and having this conversation internally with district staff, in particular, Mr. Wyatt Jesse, I want to give a shout-out for sorting out the challenges that were raised to the online enrollment process for the birth-to-three, and that I got a report back that it's all been resolved, and they're very happy with coming to a great compromise that serves our families and students. So thank you for that work. I appreciate that community members came forward to raise it, and that staff was so quick to resolve the challenges as they came up. And I have another community meeting on March 31st from 1:00 to 3:00, and I will be at the march on the 24th. I hope you all join me, and I think that's all.
Next up, Director DeWolf, please.
Thank you, President Harris. Just wanted to first start again by congratulating our Garfield Boys Basketball Team, and looking forward to seeing it at the national tournament. And also just want to make sure to mention and send a congratulations to our girls, because they also did an incredible job, so don't want to mention one without the other. And then just kind of wanted to talk about some other legislation that didn't get picked up in our conversation from earlier. Today breakfast after the bell was signed by the governor, so I know they're still looking for some, wherever that's going to be with the funding, I know they're looking for some funding. They have, I think, most of it accounted for, and I'm keeping track to make sure that it's not going to be unfunded, kind of mandate down to us, but so it's looking like they're going to be able to find some funds in the budget. And also just wanted to reiterate the excitement around the governor signing the ban on bump stocks, and particularly just want to call out the fact that some of our Seattle Public Schools students were really advocating and working on that, and so grateful to their leadership, and also for them being included in our work on our resolution. And then the other last one, kind of around legislation that I'm excited about, is the pre-registration for 16- and 17-year-olds. Watching that one and hoping it will be signed by the governor relatively soon, and looking forward to thinking about some creative ways to make sure that we are, we can be a part of that process for our 16- and 17-year-olds here, particularly if motor voter registration needs any support from us at the schools, and being creative about that. Want to thank Less Shy Elementary in the PTSA, Washington Council PTSA, I think that's what it's called. Last week, Seattle Council PTSA for organizing a conversation around funding, and thank you especially to our incredible Jill Lynn Bergy, budget rock star, for being my partner there, and also Councilmember Herbald for some really great conversations. Wanted to call attention to a couple of things that are coming up. The Native PAC is hosting a culture night on February 12th from 5, thank you, March 12th, thank you Jill, from 5:00 to 7:30 at Boran STEM K-88. And then also the Somali Mothers Night Out, which is happening on the 16th at South Shore Pre-K. What? Jill, come on. And then the other thing I want to mention, too, is just to really call this out, too, I received a letter from Jett at Daniel Begley Elementary asking about sci-fi books, and we've been able to work with some partners at Elliott Bay Book Company to get some books donated, and we have an abundance of books. So I'm actually looking for a second school to receive some sci-fi books. I, we particularly worked together with these publishers and Elliott Bay Book Company to make sure that these sci-fi books and adventure books were written from authors of color, so it's an incredible assortment of books. I will be very honest, I'm tempted to take some home myself, but I promise I won't. So if you're a student or a teacher, and you have an interest in some books, and I think there's some pretty exciting ones, Black Panther's in there, for example, please send us a letter, a handwritten letter, to the Seattle School District Attention Board of Directors at MS11010, PO Box 34165, Seattle, Washington, 98124. And I'll do a little random drawing, and we'll pick another school. And then also just wanted to mention that the National Urban Indian Family Coalition mentioned us in their report, resurgence, restructuring urban Indian, American Indian education around our Hootchus today Indian education program here at Seattle Public Schools. Really, really excited about the work that that's been able to do in our community, and they kind of highlight that in their report. And thank you to our student speaker tonight, really grateful, and please keep me posted on Consent Day, would love to be, just come and join it and celebrate the awesome conversation. And I've been having conversations with Flip about potential creative ways to do community meetings, so I'm kind of flipping on the head the traditional way that these community meetings are looking, and so more to say, I'm working with him on some ideas to get creative about our kind of community engagement, personally from my position as school board director, so looking at options like a movie night and a conversation, and we'll have some more information on that. And that's all half. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up would be Director Burke.
Brief, brief comments. Thank you to our student guest. Ellie, you're wiser than your words, wiser than your, your words are wiser than your years, is what I meant. The, you know, the, just the mindset around engaging your community and truly understanding them before you actually go to decision-making. It's something that we struggle with, because often it seems like a decision is obvious until you actually engage with the people that it matters to, and then you realize what's obvious to you, or to me, or to somebody else, isn't really in the benefit of the community. So thank you for being open-minded in that work, it's amazing. I'm also super proud to be part of this district, part of this board, and the public messaging and the positions that we've been taking around gun safety and really protecting our students. It's amazing, it's just such a point of, such a point of pride. So thank you to my colleagues and staff and the community that's, that holds us accountable to this work as well. I had a great meeting yesterday with the Lipton Springs community. You know, they're, they're super passionate about their school, their community, and how, you know, I learned more about the challenges of co-locating two schools in one building, and, you know, how they're working through that, some of the ideas they have on how to, how to make sure that that's a, you know, productive and valuable experience for both schools. And then also, we spoke creatively about, you know, how to manage upcoming potential capacity challenges with, you know, new building, growing enrollment, and we're looking at how to, how to manage that for both of the schools. So it was a really positive and interesting, you know, we, I think we had over two hours of discussion, and it was just a really neat bunch of people. Hot off the presses, we already did committee reports, but since this one hasn't actually made it to a committee, I wanted to share, I had a conversation just right before the board meeting today with, with our Director of Dots, John Kroll, and there've been a lot of, we flirted with the idea of a technology committee, and John and his team have really put together some nice groundwork on that. He shared it with me, took some, some feedback as well, and we're going to try to bring that to the executive committee next week, so just notifying the board and the Chair of the Executive Committee ad hoc, so I'll take that up with you as well through formal channels. But this would be an advisory committee that includes community and staff, and helps us with our educational strategy, our mission, our, you know, specific projects, budget priorities, a lot of really great things built into that charter, so I'd love to get that out in front of directors and get more feedback as we work that through our process. If things go well, the, it would go through board process by If things go well, the, it would go through board process by April 4th, and the first meeting of the committee could potentially be as soon as the 3rd Monday in April, April 16th.
Deputy Nielsen, are you listening, since you had already advised that you're in agreement with this plan? And do you know about this fast-tracking?
Probably not all the detail.
But you're still nodding yes? Terrific, thank you so much.
And then, then the last point, I have a meeting on the, community meeting on the calendar for Saturday, March 17th, and unfortunately, I will be out of town that date. I'm working to reschedule it for March 24th in the afternoon, likely 3:30 to 5:30, so, you know, after a march, you can spend an afternoon with the board director.
You won't find the library open.
I have a tentative reservation for one.
Oh, okay. Director Pinkham, or Director Patu, and Director Geary?
Tats Clowat, good evening, and Katziya, thank you. First of all, Ellie, thank you for your words, you know. I can really touch base with that as far as we got to make sure we listen to our students, listen to those people that we're providing services for, and not take the assumption we know what they want or need, because often, when you do that, we complicate a lot of things where we think, this is right for you, this is correct for you, but if we don't listen and hear that, no, this isn't right for me, we're not going anywhere. So, thank you for sharing your voice, and encouraging that kind of perspective in your school as well, and hopefully, you're showing the teachers and everyone else there, hey, this idea works, you know, just the brilliance of our students in our schools, for all our students, keep it up and keep going. Some announcements for me, just wanted to give a shout-out to the Urban Native Education Alliance, they recently celebrated their 10-year anniversary. Councilmember Deborah Juarez was there to present a signed proclamation, kind of acknowledging their 10 years of providing a service for our urban native youth, and also, while I'm on this kind of idea, the Udub Spring Powell will be April 7th and 8th at Heckhead Pavilion. If you have time that weekend, stop by Heckhead to enjoy some of the native song and dance and other festivities that'll be going along there. And keeping along with the University of Washington, Director Nyland mentioned Dr. Emile Petrie in one of his visits. The Office of Minority Affairs and the University is actually celebrating their 50th anniversary this year, so for 50 years, they've provided support for our often underserved and marginalized communities, so I want to give a shout-out to them and what they do for our students. And right now, I'm just, wish I can be at Las Vegas, because that's where the UW men's basketball tournament's being held right now, and the Huskies are playing the Beavers. Almost like going back to the football, when I said we had to break our schedule around the football schedule for the University of Washington. I also, just kind of getting back to the students, encourage all our students to speak up, you know, I think that's what's going to help our community get better. If you see someone being harassed, intimidated, bullied, speak up, you know, stand up for those that often feel too marginalized, and let them know. If you have a friend that starts harassing, intimidating somebody else, be the one that says, hey, that's not right, that's, you're not lifting yourself up any by putting someone else down, let's help raise everyone up, and make sure people are doing good. So, again, going back to Ellie, just, you know, speak up and share what's going on, you know, think those kind of things can help prevent and get into the way of things that happen, such as back in February 14th, where someone may have felt intimidated or bullied and didn't feel a value at their school, you know, someone could reach out to them, so hopefully, we can get more counselors and, to help our students if they, if and when they need it. My next meeting will be March 24th, and actually, what's printed on the handouts, I do need to make a correction, it won't be at Lake City Public Library, because they're undergoing a remodel, so they moved me to Northgate Library on that day, and instead of being at 10:30, my meeting will start at 3:00. So, my next meeting will be March 24th at Northgate Library from 3:00 to 4:30, and hopefully, we can get that corrected online. And attendees at my last meeting included former Director Marty McLaren to talk about the African-American Advisory Council, what they're doing, so I got somewhat of an update from her that will hopefully give more update at our next board meeting. Some people still sharing concerns with the Naviance software that we're going to be using and bringing online, and just like Director Mack, the early intervention, and again, I'm glad that they brought that up, and we were able to move forward and come to a compromise that won't, you know, leave out families and students that need those services, based upon what we thought would be a good idea. Again, we listened, and changes were made that met the needs of our constituents. And before I go, just wanted to, I was inspired, I was reading applications for a summer program that I run, and one of the students had in there a quote that they learned from their father, who was a migrant farmworker, that said, "There are no complicated problems, only complicated perspectives." So, as we try to solve these issues that we have at hand, it may seem complicated, but the more, I guess I'll use, complex perspectives that we have up here with the school board, the better that we can solve those. And also, from those that are in the audience, and those sitting around the walls of this building right now, we have some great minds here, and all our perspectives will hopefully make our complicated problems go away faster and with good measure. Katziya.
Director Geary, or Director Patu?
First, I want to say thank you to Ellie for sharing with us her thoughts and her ideas in terms of what's happening at her school, and also what she's involved in. Thank you. I always think it's exciting when young people are actually really engaging in communities, and really talking about what can they do to make a difference in what's happening in our community, so thank you for being here tonight. Also, want to congratulate Rayar Beach High School for making it to state playoff, even though we didn't win, we got beat by Garfield, but it's the fact that they were there. And congratulations, Garfield. I thought that they played pretty well, and they deserved to win, so congratulations. I actually was pretty much out of the loop all last week, I was actually at home mourning for one of my, actually, my brother, who actually had passed away this week, and so I've been out of, so I've been at home, actually, just trying to think about all the things that could've and would've, and, but I'm actually excited to be here today, to be able to continue on the excitement of actually being able to come and report in terms of what's happening out there in our community. I have been able to touch base with some of my schools, and pretty much just making sure that things are running in the right direction, and been, you know, really been hearing a lot of good stories in terms of a lot of success that goes on in the Southeast District. So, I'm very pleased, congratulate to all the principals and administration who are actually running our schools, because it takes great management in order for our schools to continue on and to provide all our kids the education that they deserve. So, thank you for all the work that's going on at the schools, and I'm actually, wanted to thank some of my colleagues, who actually have offered their condolences in terms of what I'm going through right now, but I actually, it's good to be here today and be able to share, you know, what's happening, and I am really very fortunate to always be able to have the opportunity to work at a district to make a difference in the lives of our kids, because I think that education has always been a very important to me, and I think that, you know, every little bit that we do in terms of making a difference for our kids is the reason why we're all here. So, thank you, and I think that's all I have to say.
Of course, our condolences. So, thank you, Ellie, for coming. I won't repeat everything, we love to hear your voice, and we love to hear the voices of all of our students here at board, and I know it's always one of the audience's favorite moments as well. And one of the things you talked about is an idea that I've been reading about more lately, and I, and I hope it's one that spreads, and that is the idea of taking that moment to make space for voices, and allowing some student-directed times within the educational environment. And that can be as simple as letting kids talk about what they want to see on the walls of their classroom, and letting them draw the pictures of the people that they want to be their inspiration, as opposed to coming into a classroom that's already been preordained by history and what everybody thinks should be on there. And so, I think that corresponds a lot with what's happening at Nova, and that's your experience, and so I hope that you continue to tell that story and create energy around that idea on behalf of your fellow students at Nova, but on, for every student in all of our schools, that that's a really important idea that generates a lot of enthusiasm for education, and so feel free to share that idea with anybody who wants to hear it, and you and, once you guys at Nova have that dialed down, take it on the road, and spread that enthusiasm, so thank you. And I'm trying to do my work around that as well, so I've been spending Mondays having lunch with X-9 middle schoolers, I feel like that is a great place where, in my district, a lot of people come in and then, you know, will go out again, but a lot of my constituents' students end up at X-9, and it has been a pleasure, because I see the work that we hear about here in action. And while I don't think it is currently up on the wall, I wouldn't doubt if one day it is. Principal Stirk has created a lot of enthusiasm around MTSS, and I see that in the teacher's lunchroom, where they have the tools and the opportunity to regularly talk about all of their students as groups. I talked to the teachers about that work, they felt it was very supportive for them, they thought it was great for their students. In the lunchroom, I sit down with students, and I ask them if there are people there that they can identify that care about them, and I have to say, I didn't, I have yet to meet her, because she holds a class at the end of the day, but Ms. Evans is apparently a rock star, because it didn't matter who it was, when I said, is there somebody who cares about you, about 50% of the time, Ms. Evans was the voice that they said. So, Ms. Evans, wherever you are, thank you for your work on behalf of those X-9 middle school kids, they love you. And then, I want to thank, I saw Dr. Brent Jones walk out, and I wanted to take this moment to say that we talked about X-9 Middle School, and he offered to continue what he is doing, which is sort of a EOG listening tour with students, to go in and talk about, a little bit about the work that we're doing here regarding closing the gap, but then taking the time to listen to those students about what they need their education to look like. And I mentioned that to Principal Stirk, and she said, we would love to have Dr. Jones come, so hopefully, we'll be getting that going. Today, Director DeWolf and I met with our city council members, Lorena Gonzalez and Rob Johnson, just to pretty much talk about how we, the board and city council, can work together to plan for the future. We have some big voter asks coming up, and we want to make sure that we're coordinating so that taxpayer dollars can be put to good use to meet the many educational needs that have been identified in our city, from preschool up to the Seattle Promise, and how we can work, there's so much exciting work that's happening, I think, around preschool, we talk about that, and I know, I see a lot of people in the audience here today that want to talk about preschool. And then, there's a lot of work that I know Director Burke is spearheading with Caleb Perkins, around how are we braiding career technical education for our kids' futures so that they can start in high school to explore pathways into the future. And we need to be sharing that exciting work with our city, because our city takes great interest in our, what we are doing, and wants to support us. And so, I was very pleased to hear their invitation to continue to sit down with us, to talk with us, to invite us to their meetings around education, we invited them to our meetings around education, and so hopefully, we will all be taking those opportunities and coordinating to make sure that we're, we're doing the best job we can. And then, finally, I've been continuing to have my Tuesday morning coffees at Zoka on Blakely, behind the U Village. I find that that is just an easy way for me to meet with people, and I get a variety of people coming through, including some recent visitors, again, on the preschool issue, so we'll hear more about that, I think, and have more comments about that a little later. ADA accessibility at Bryant is another frequent topic, I hear a number of variety of issues around special education, and how we can make those services better in the district. So, I'm going to continue to do that, it's Tuesdays, 8:00 to 9:30 at Zoka. If that day or time is really inconvenient for people, then please shoot me an email, I, I'm happy to take some time to talk with somebody on the phone. I just find that with my children's complicated weekend scheduling, that the weekend meetings end up becoming very difficult, and I often sit alone, because I know everybody else is running their kids around. So, I will make myself available if somebody needs to at a different time, but I hope to see you there, it's really fun, a lot of people show up really concerned about education, caring about education, and like to talk with each other. So, thank you, everybody.
Okay, I'm up, I'm going to make it short, so we can take a short break before public testimony starts at 5:30. My community meetings are at High Point Library, April 7th, 3:00 to 5:00. April 28th, 3:00 to 5:00, Delridge Library, April, excuse me, May 23, Delridge Library, 3:00 to 5:00, one and three chance of lasagna. Okay, a couple of other reminders, Task Force on Enrollment, that closes March 19th. If you're interested in being a part of the solution and being heard, go to the website, sign up, follow the instructions. I saw somewhere, I neglected to write it down, and I don't see it on our opening screen, and perhaps we can raise its visibility, a dual-language Task Force meeting coming up, and get that out, A, to the board, and B, on the opening screen or on the calendar, because that's an issue of, of great interest to folks. Tomorrow evening, 6:30 to 7:30, Chief South International High School, Mayor Durkin will be presenting on anti-violence issues, we will be invited, and I believe that our resolution was duly noted. And I cannot say again how extraordinarily proud I am of our nimbleness in putting together a resolution we can all stand behind, of the collaboration and the input of my fellow colleagues and of the staff that helped us push it out there loud and proud. And on that note, we need to see everybody at the March for Life on March 24th, 10:00 AM, Cal Anderson Park, we will have Seattle School District banners, wear your t-shirts. Let's, let's keep up the effort. Banning bump stocks is a lovely thing, but there is so much more to be done, and moreover, it's not going to happen in the 24 hours before the legislature adjourns. I remind folks, McCleary has not solved our problems, we have nine nurses for 54,000 students, we have counseling ratios of 400 to 1 in our high schools, not acceptable, and these issues are all extraordinarily interrelated. The other issue I want to put you on your calendar, March 29th, is a superintendent search public forum, right here, 5:00 to 8:15. We're working hard, and we are listening, and you know our emails addresses, and/or you can send questions to the board office as well. One other piece of legislation that I saw go by, and I don't know the status, but I think of huge interest, is dyslexia screening for our K-5 students. but I think of huge interest, is dyslexia screening for our K-5 students. However, if it is yet another unfunded mandate, it will just cause us more trouble. It's not to say that it's not important, but when we pass bills, we need to put money attached to them because there's not enough to go around. And with that, we'll take a short break of four to five minutes and come back for stretch.